Thank you Bacon. And what happened before? OBS just cracked itself. And um. I realized I was still logged in to fucking HFT almost uh. Um, my thirst was almost down to zero. And I've had to restart HF to 5M as well. So I don't know what happened. So um. I'm sure there's gonna be plenty more problems. Alright. My father with the intro. We saw it already. Um. I didn't even know if uh, I know there's still a handful of cops on. I don't know who else is on. But um. Let's see, I felt like coming back on, so. I'm pretty sure my car just got impounded too right before I logged out, so I might just go back to the apartments. There we go. Alright. Still a few people around. Uh. Got your voice well. He said to Victor, we can spray on the back of your church, so I did. Oh. Alright, that'll. That'll do. Oh, um. Just make sure the car's down here. Oh wait, oh, it's up at the, is it still at the hospital? Are you fucking kidding me? Ah! Alright, we'll take the bike. These things happen, yeah. Hi Java. Hello again. Yeah, sorry I had to run before. Thanks again for the raid. Yeah, love the um. I love the city council meetings. Um, god, this is slow. Yeah, that's a bit better. Fucking hell, 43 miles an hour. Yeah fuck, I thought I. I thought the car was gone. Oh wait, you can't lock these. No, if someone steals it, it'll just eventually get. Impounded, won't it? Oops. Can see Zoe. Uh, it's the best way. Wait, what? Two hours ago? Ah, Peacock tried to call me. Did he? Alright, did he? Says two hours ago. Damn, alright. Um. Yep, sweet. Oh. Just wondering why the fuck I couldn't steer. Um. His ambulance. Ah, oh, yes, hi Dale.
Hello, I, I actually have a delivery that I needed to make for you, so you turning up here, uh, you know, is, is very convenient.
Oh shoot, you're joking me?
Oh no, I got a, I got a special delivery right here.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, one, one sec.
You alright? Oh, the suspense is killing me, right?
And, and there's, there's a card with it.
Oh, let me take a look here. Oh shit, look at all this. Oh wow. Look at all the days, look at all these goodies.
It's a little gift basket for you.
A little goodie bag.
You know that they're thinking of you.
Oh shoot, thank you.
Uh, to be honest, it's, it's really nice to be able to, you know, to put together something nice like that and, you know, spread a little joy, so.
Oh, you put this together?
Uh, well yeah, it was a request to just send, send you a, a gift basket with some flowers and some goodies and.
Oh, from the, oh.
You know, it was, I had to, I had to put something like that on, on our like regular menu, cause it's, it's really nice putting those things together, so.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, oh, I will, below my, in my mind sheet. This is exactly what I came here for, to get all these, you know, my, my smoothies. And well, no, thank you so much, all these flowers smell delightful. Oh, can you just um?
Enjoy, I, I was just about to say, uh, I'm, like. My knives are like completely dull and I need to like bring them to the sharpeners and like bring them back to the hardware store and get them sharpened up, so. Smoothies are, are unavailable right now, but uh, we, we have pretty much everything else.
Oh yes, fair enough. I mean, what do we got here? What is this wheatgrass? Oh yes, wheatgrass, right? Oh, what's this muffin? What are these muffins? What are those? They smell like banana.
Yeah, banana nut. From a local bakery here in town.
Don't mind if I D. Oh, hmm. Oh shoot, it's like my mommy smacked, hmm, oh. Oh, that is, oh, that is delightful. Thank you so much.
Oh, so glad you enjoying it.
And how are you tonight, Zo?
Yeah, not, not bad. Things are quiet up at the garage, but uh.
Oh yes, right.
Vibrant enough.
Yes, yes, well, I mean, you know, give it time, there'll be people.
Come on in.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Hello, officer.
I, I guess I can, I can leave the door unlocked, uh, now that, now that you're around.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stay here until, until things calm down a wee bit.
Uh, thank you, thank you. I, you know, I was hoping for a nice quiet evening tonight, but uh. Yeah, seems like, uh, you know, the spooky season spirit is, is still, still happening, uh.
And there's something in there, alright.
You tell him, mate. Have you still, is that stalker leaving you alone? Is he still, you know? Getting around.
Haven't heard anything more from that person and yeah, no, no hammer appearances, uh.
Oh, thank you, Lord.
Got the window fixed up, so that's, that's all good, but uh.
Fantastic.
I mean, this, this uh, no face coverings inside the store policy seems to be a real sticking point. I mean, I guess maybe some people just like to go trick or treating, like all month long, but uh. Yeah.
Yeah, it's right. Well, I think there's more to it than just uh, people having fun, right? I mean, you was there the other day at the, at the park.
Yeah, yeah, it certainly was. I mean, that, that didn't really have anything to do with all of this. That was like contact from the beyond.
Exactly, right? They all think I'm crazy up there at City Hall.
What? No, I mean surely not.
You're messing around with uh supernatural things?
No, quite the clone travel. They was messing around with us.
Oh.
Yes.
If, if, if he's needed, he's, he's a phone, something going on.
Oh, thank you, officer.
Thanks.
See you new guy.
I hope everything's okay. I'm, I'm just gonna, gotta lock this back up, I guess.
Yeah, it's fine enough. Don't worry, I ain't gonna let anybody had happen, right?
I, I hope, I hope Dr. Wild is alright. Look, that's, you know, his ambulance still parked out there.
Who's is it? Oh, Dr. Wild, right?
Oh yeah, he was, he was here when, when someone wearing a mask and, and carrying a baseball bat came and was trying to get inside.
Oh, you're joking me? What they, wow, what was they saying?
Well, they, they, they just asked to come inside and I explained that we have this, this no face coverings policy and, you know, asked them if they would remove their masks to come inside.
Yes.
And they said they didn't want to. And then Orion said that he would go with them and, you know, it's like, leave, leave Zoe alone, like, I'll go with you, you don't want any trouble and.
Oh shoot.
Unlock the door and, and let him go and he, he went with them and got in a car with them and they drove away and I'm, I'm just worried. I, I hope he's alright.
Oh no, that's so brave. Surely he's okay. Would you like to pry?
No, I'd like to order, please.
Oh, uh, yes, of course, sorry, yes.
Let me, let me take care of my customer here and then, yeah, I could probably use a few like deep breaths or something, but yeah, what can I get you?
Can I get two of those wraps and put a little hot sauce on them if you've got some and uh, two of those wheatgrass things?
Oh sure, sure, you got it.
Thank you.
Wheatgrass can make you feel a million dollars, right?
Oh, alright, is that your recommendation for in here?
Well, no, I mean, I'd get the smoothie ordinarily, right? But the wheatgrass, it's like, uh, I see it as like a medicinal thing, right? Like medicine, you don't enjoy the taste of medicine, but you take it when you feel the need, right?
You think it might just be like a, a mental thing?
No, no. No, it makes you uh, you know, I just have one then, within I'd say by uh, seven minutes from now, I'm uh, I'm uh, having explosive bowel movement, right?
Oh dear.
Oh no, it's, it's a uh, oh, it's a blessing, right?
Is that to do with the wheatgrass or just you?
No, the wheatgrass is kind of uh, it's like a flo- a flocculent, right? It uh, bonds everything together and just pushes it all the way out.
Alright, I, I might actually change my order.
Cleansing, uh.
It's cleansing.
Explosive, explosive is not usually.
Not ex- no, not explosive.
With its effect.
No, I wouldn't say explosive.
Ask a doctor about that, but I mean, yeah, wheatgrass is just full of like really good vitamins and minerals and I, I think it has a really nice.
Cold brew coffee instead.
No, get the wheatgrass.
No, no, I don't want the wheatgrass, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, believe me, you take a wheatgrass shit. Oh no, take a week, listen, will you?
My, you know how much money I spend on my car interiors? I look after it, I clean it every day. I don't wanna take the chance.
Oh, you ain't go- I ain't gonna give you diarrhea now.
Well, that, you, you made it sound like it was gonna give me explosive diarrhea.
No, no, I'd, no, when I say explosive, I mean like uh, you know, like a sneeze. Like, you know, say you do a, say you do a, like a sneeze.
Alright, let me uh, just ring you up here.
I'll pay for the, I'll just take those wheatgrass as well, but I'll probably just drink the cold brews.
Oh, okay, uh, cool.
Well, the coffee's gonna do a similar thing.
So that'll be uh, 220 altogether. Um, would you like to add a, or do you have a reusable bag that you'd like to use?
Popped it on the counter there.
Oh, great, great, okay.
Yeah, just pay by card, please.
What did I say? 220? So that'll just be 210 then. You get your $10 off.
Great. Do you want these wheatgrass?
No, you have them, right? No, believe me, I want you to have them and then be like, next time you see me, be like, shoot, you know what? I see what you mean. I, I see why you said explosive, right?
Sorry, that be cash or card?
Uh, card.
Card, right.
Cause explosive, I mean, the negative connotations on explosive, it don't, it don't apply here. I mean it in a good way.
Better, better word, maybe?
Oh, of course, yeah, there is, definitely.
So what, what word would you use other than explosive?
Releasing the demon, right?
Cleansing, cleansing.
Yes, cleansing, right?
Uh, your bag's on the counter there.
Okay, got it. Thank you, Zoe.
Great, great. Uh, well, let me, let me know what you think of uh, wheatgrass and, you know, I hope you, you get just all the goodness from it and really enjoy.
Alright, I might give it to someone and see what they say and I'll, I'll relay that back to you.
I ain't pausing, mate. Alright, you as well, so.
That was gonna be a nice.
Look at here. Hello? The hell do you want?
What do you mean? I want to, I want to buy, oh shit, mask, hold on. Sorry, sorry, that was my bad, I forgot.
Oh, it's Pedro. Oh shoot, yes, right.
Alright, yes, thank you, thank you for removing the mask, you know, I know it's spooky season, but we just have a little like, no, no face covering policy going on right now, so come on in.
Sorry, I just hide my makeup, I don't want to ruin my Halloween costume.
Oh right, no fair enough.
Sorry about that, I know, it is, it is crazy.
Scared the shit out of us for a second, though.
Shade of lipstick, it's so vivid.
Oh, very uh. Yeah, it's very uh, what's the word? Sexual, right?
That is what I'm going for.
Well, you nailed it.
What is the point in Halloween if you cannot have a sexy costume, no?
No, no.
But yes, I understand why you're wary. Someone tried to kidnap me and Tammy's, but it, it did not go so, it did not go so well for them, so it is.
Oh shoot.
Oh gosh, are you okay? Need something to uh, you know, a little stress reliever or something to?
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm okay. They seem like they're pretty amateur, but I mean, I could just only do it.
I'd recommend the wheatgrass.
Wheatgrass?
Yes.
I've not had wheatgrass before.
Wheatgrass gives you a wet ass.
What do you mean? Like, when you sit on it?
Oh, I, I don't think that's the marketing slogan we should be using.
Rams.
It's a, it's a mineral loaded cleansing, uh, all natural.
Oh, it is drink?
Juice, yeah, yeah. If you uh, we've got some uh tofu salad or some uh, satan wraps, if you're looking for something to eat.
The satan wraps are amazing, right?
I did not think you would be such fan of satan wraps.
No, 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 satan, right? Ain't Satan. Like, I like Satan, right? Satan shites.
Right, what word are you saying instead of Satan?
Satan. Like, imagine, like tan? Say, okay, say tan?
Is that not how Satan is spelled? Ten.
Well, how do you spell it? No, say tan.
Uh, right, it's, it's Japanese, I think, it's uh.
Oh, okay, okay. It is like a cultural difference, right? It is not like, it is not like um, evil Baba Yaga, no?
No, no.
No, no, it's just, it's wheat gluten mostly.
I don't know what this is, but I'm open minded. It's a city of many different possibilities, so okay, I will try one.
Alright, great. And anything else to drink or you got that wheatgrass?
I, I will, I will try this, this grass, grass, grass smoothie.
Hey uh, Peter, I appreciate what you were trying to do up at the garage just half an hour ago.
What do you mean?
When you came up, you offered to uh, pay for a random customer's. Upgrade. That was appreciated.
I did not say this.
You, you said it was a trick or treat surprise?
Oh, okay, that sounds like the people that tried to jump me, to be fair. They uh, they said something about trick or treating before trying to force me into their car.
Oh, there's several of them?
So I think, I think it was, well, it was one to start with and then another showed up, so I had to beat them both up.
What, what's your, what's your uncle's name?
Oh, good, my, yeah.
Uh, I have many uncles.
What's your uncle's name that you were named after?
Oh, no, my uncle's not named Peter. My father is Peter. Peter Senior.
Let me uh, ring you up over here when you're ready.
He said that his uncle is called Peter.
Uh, would that be cash or card?
His uncle, Peter's uncle is called Peter and his uncle is called Peter.
Oh, hang on, well, Peter was uh, Tammy's uncle, right?
Uh, well. It's on the counter there for you.
Tammy called me her uncle, but we are not actually related, but.
Well, yes, of course. So is this some, maybe one of Tammy's old friends that uh, also called your uncle?
When you said about the trick or treating, it makes me think it is the same people. You're lucky they did not try and kidnap you.
Oh shoot.
So strange, he said he didn't wanna disturb my business and he was wanting, he was looking for a customer to come up to uh, give them a free upgrade.
What does ASO look like?
Uh, he had, he had mask.
Wings, he had wings and a mask.
Big wings, yes, big wings, that is what I saw also.
I thought that was you.
It was one with wings and other person had like a mask on that is two color, like orange and black. Oh, they had, they had uh, they, they, I think they pulled Orion from the hospital. Cause uh, they were in another car that pulled up, but I, I left. Hopefully he got away after I uh, I hit them both.
Uh, no, Orion was taken from here. That's, that's his ambulance parked outside.
Right, okay, yes, well, I think.
He was, he was very brave. He, he went out with them voluntarily. I, I hope he's okay.
Well, he should be okay. I beat them both up, but maybe, to be fair, he is pretty kind hearted. Maybe he gave them medical attention.
That's his job, right?
Yes, if he, if he was like, even though they tried to kidnap him, he probably.
Yeah, yes. The oath.
I hope he at least, they at least repaired the favor and, and took him back.
Oh right.
I hope he uh, I hope he sedated both of them and ran away.
Oh, I forgot they can do that. They have like needles that will put people to sleep.
Oh right. That's the wheatgrass.
Uh, hey, it's Yugi.
Who's that? Yugi?
It's quite earthy.
I was looking very lively today.
It's like, it's like all the goodness of the earth in a glass. Hey Yugi, come on in.
Yes, usually I do not eat grass, I just.
Ah, Yugi.
But this is, this is not too bad. Hello.
Hey.
You have to be careful, Yugi, there is uh, strange people around.
Oh, I know there's a lot of strange people around.
I feel, I feel a lot better when, when there's not strange people around, like all of you, so.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yes, thank you for saying so.
We are, we are pretty strange people, you know, sometimes.
Well, I, I'm definitely quite a strange person, but I'm not that strange.
Sorry, elves.
You see that hammer guy, is he back around?
Yes.
Oh, is he? I mean, he hasn't been here thankfully. Hunter fixed up our uh, Hunter and Martha fixed up our window.
Oh, nice.
Well, that is cool.
Good as new.
Yes, I suppose when uh, windshields and windows are not so different. Pretty clever.
Oh, yes, right.
Martha definitely did her part, though.
She working up there at the garage, huh?
She totally uh, deserves a bonus for fixing that.
Oh, she works here, yes, right.
Yeah, I, I finally, finally got myself uh, my first employee, so it's not just me here anymore.
Oh fantastic, oh yes, look at these.
I met Martha before, they came in to get their car fixed because their tire had been slashed or something by uh, this hammer person.
She's a nice lady, right?
Oh gosh, oh yeah, that reminds me, I, I'd forgotten in all of the uh, confusion, but yeah, my, my scooter went missing when I was up at the print shop, printing up that, that card for your basket, Father. I, I came out and my scooter was gone.
Oh, you're joking me?
Somebody stole your scooter?
Well, I don't know about stole, like maybe, maybe it was a, a like impound sweep that happened, it's like super fast, just like, just at the moment that I went inside, but. Or maybe someone like got confused and mistook it for theirs, or, I mean, could have been anything really, but.
Yeah, yes. Check your uh, your app to find your car?
I, I did, it, it didn't, it didn't find anything. I, I did, it, it didn't, it didn't find anything, so.
Oh, well, if he doesn't find anything, that means he's in the impound.
Probably, apparently.
Don't know how it got there so fast, but.
Oh, sometimes they come by and they, they do a sweep, like you say, really fast.
It can sometimes depend on, on where they are parked also, sometimes things get taken away quicker than others.
Yeah, and if you lock them or not.
I mean, I had it in a parking spot and locked, but, alright, well, I'll have to get myself down there to pick it up, I guess, my bike's there too. So, I'm gonna have to make two trips.
Oh, two trips, happy to give you a lift, right, if you're not, if, if you uh need one.
Oh, I'd appreciate that, thank you, Father.
Of course.
I will give you a lift, but I, I didn't come here in my car today.
Uh, yeah, now I saw you zooming up on your skateboard, looking very slick.
You should wear uh protective clo, uh protective gear, right, like uh elbow pads, at least proper pair of shoes, set of flip flops.
It is not very cool, though, to wear helmet.
Safety is cool, right? You know what I?
Best, best part of skateboarding is hearing, like feeling wind go through your hair. You can't get that if you're, you have helmet on.
Oh, really, right? I never skateboarded in my life.
Oh, you should buy one, it is fun.
Yeah, you can get one right over there at the bike shop.
No, these knees ain't what they used to be, right?
If I got one, could you uh teach me?
I don't know how to skate.
Good issue.
Oh, yeah.
It's not so hard.
Yeah.
It's mostly about balance, as long as you have balance and you know where to put your weight on the board, it is okay.
Yeah, it's real handy to get around sometimes, you know, when you don't feel like driving, especially, especially at short distances, you know?
Yeah, so if someone tries to force you into a car and drive you away, and then uh you don't have your car, you can just skateboard back.
Yeah, that too.
Oh, yes, right.
How about on uh sandy surfaces, like up at sandy shores, they still work?
Yeah, they, they are surprisingly good on sand.
As long as you keep your wheels, you know, lubricated properly, and over a lot of things, yeah.
Have face, can you go on them?
Oh, not that fast, like maybe uh, like fifteen miles per hour, maybe?
I was just on my bike, I went for a little bike ride, I got uh, I reckon I was over forty miles an hour. On a bicycle, yes, right?
Maybe your knees are not so bad after all, yeah.
Well, yes, right.
A great way to get around, especially like a fixter like I've got goes pretty fast, don't need any gas.
That's what I got.
Unless you crash into something, but, yeah, it's a great way to get around, more people should try it.
Good reliable bike. Oh, right.
You can't do uh bunny hops on it, though, I think it might fall apart, but you can sure go fast on it.
Oh, I see these people getting around on them BMXs.
No, do it front, because you can do stunts.
Yeah, oh, like Chata Chase Ka-ching, right?
Oh, yes, yes, Jess is very good on his BMX.
Yes, well, shoot, he's no one, you know.
Oh, you want me to let you up?
Yes, please.
Go on, live, give us a little demo, right? I see Dixon's up there working at Bahama Mama's, right? Oh, shoot, look at that.
It's okay, Zoe, we will not uh harm you if I'm here, I'll just hit them again.
Yeah, I, I feel so much safer with uh, with everyone around.
Dixon got hired at Bahama Mama, she's our newest employee.
Oh, fantastic, I haven't seen that lady in shoot forever.
Yeah, I know, me neither.
Alright, where do you buy these things? I'd shoot, maybe I should give it a go, right? You all okay?
I think the problem is we both tried to swerve and uh hit each other.
We went in the right direction, the wrong direction, oh man, that really hurt.
We should have both just kept going, oh, you're, you're in pain?
Oh, yeah, I'm like, oh shit, I think I might need to go to the hospital.
Oh, you joking, Moi?
No, I, I'll, I'll, I'll try and walk it off. Eh, anyway, if you wanna follow, probably, oh, I think Hunter is already going that way.
Oh, it's just the, what, the box shop or something?
Yeah, it's the bike shop.
Oh, alright, okay. Shit, excuse me. Uh...
You looking for one of these skateboards?
Yeah, well, this shop pay you?
Yeah, just uh talk to the guy.
Ah, so? Oh. Uh, bike, 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 bike. What? Whoa, different guy. Am I missing something here? The hell is that? I need to learn. Oh, I see, two fifty. I could get you ten skateboards for that. Alright, I got it.
Well, that was short-lived.
Sorry, I didn't mean to be a party pooper, but.
Did you get one, Father?
I got one, right, wh- wait, where they going?
Uh, well, I guess Yugi has to go to the hospital now, he, he hit his head pretty hard when he fell just there.
Oh, shoot, right?
Zoe, can, can you teach us some, some stuff?
Uh, I cannot, I mean, I can keep you company while we wobble around together, but I can teach you nothing.
Can't be that hard, right? Let me see here.
Check this move out.
Oh, shoot, well, that's just laying down, right?
Yeah, but it looks like zooming around, doesn't it? Whee!
It kinda does, right?
Spiderman movies.
Oh, yay, it's the trick, trick photography, right? Okay, how do I? How do you put it away?
There's a, there's an actual skate park, like, it's over there, if you wanna try that.
Oh, right. Okay, careful, oh, shoot, are you all okay?
Oh, yeah, I'm fine, that's my pride.
Oh, these, no, these things are dangerous, right?
You wanna go try the skate park?
Let's, let's do the skate park, where is it?
Yeah, I may, I may walk there.
Yeah, I'mma run over.
It's uh, oh, yeah, it's just uh over that.
Oh, I think I see it. Alright, I've raced you, ready, set, go. Oh, shoot, hang, no, wait, hang on. Oh, shoot, oh, fucking hell! It's quite a drop. Why are they got stairs in here?
Uh, so you can, what is it called, grind on them?
Oh, grind the stairs, right?
Is that legal?
Don't sound like a run. Finally, it was this easy. Oh, shoot! I think I'm getting the hang of these.
Oh, are you alright?
Shoot, ow, my knee.
Did he just trip, trip you up?
Did you just trip me up, motherfucker? Hi, asshole! Get out of here, you gonna skate or no?
It's like that no, no unaccompanied adults in the kids playground thing, you know?
Yeah, exactly, right? Yeah, there's, oh, you're lucky I can't climb. Oops. Yeah, I don't think I've ever used one of these.
Oh, wow.
I used to roller skate a lot. Oh, nah, ignite RP, the eighty server. Not as woodcock, though. Fuck. Ah, come on, ah. Oh. The ramp. Fuck's sake. What's this locker on that slip and slide?
Uh, slippery? Oh, you mean what's this like, I thought you meant just what's the slip and slide like in Europe?
Oh, no, no, yes, on, I imagine doing it on the skateboard. Oh, shoot!
Are, are you okay?
Well, I'm okay, I'm alright, oh, shoot.
I think I just thought you go like fifty foot up in the air.
Oh, really? No, I like uh landed on my ass on the grass here.
Oh, that, that's the safest place around.
Uh... Oh, press E, yep, okay. Oops, steering's a bit... See, can't steer when you do that, okay, yeah, gotcha. Oh, shoot, could somebody help me up, please? Whoa! Okay, we'll try this. Gonna be the weirdest thing to watch. Okay, let's see if we can stay on this, ah, fuck it. Oh. Shoot. I'm gonna end up getting killed. Alright, I don't think I'm cut out for this skateboarding business. Oh, shoot.
You looked like you were doing fine for a little while there, maybe with practice, you could be the uh skateboard and priest.
Oh, yes, really, yeah, really get to that uh youth demogra, demographic, right?
I'm thinking I might need to pay a visit to the hospital, my uh, my spine is not feeling any better.
Yes, I definitely need to go, right? I gotta bring it in my ears.
Did you hurt yourself too?
Yes, I can't walk properly, look at this.
Oh, oh dear, are you, are you fit to drive?
Oh, I can definitely drive, come on. Oh, shoot, you came through on Skype, huh?
Pretty much, yeah.
What's his fucking name again?
Well, I was just being careful, I think. Yo, we're flying.
I was trying to be careful.
For a while, it felt great.
Yes. But you know, I mean, do you know why we uh... Do you know why we fall?
Excuse me?
Uh, why?
Oh, don't, don't, it ain't worth it, right, look at the size of that asshole. Oh, yes, he looked very pretty, rob his shirt, oh, shoot, he's coming, okay. Alright, leave us alone! We might have to fight him, right?
No, no, Father, fighting is never the answer.
Do you know why we fall?
Because we flew?
It's so weak alone to get back up.
Oh.
So, is that the quote?
That's, that's very profound.
It's nice, right?
It is.
Batman's Butler said that. How's she walking like that? Is she like? Oh, can't you crouch when you're, when you're hurt, I've never realized that.
Oh, no, you're...
Oh, a little way to go.
You got that hitch in your back now, too.
Yes. I'm trying to stand upright. Oh, yes, thank you, so.
Oh, thank you, does, does anyone need anything from the shop before I close up?
Oh, I got all the goodies I need for the moment. Two cars going off.
Maddie misplaced your keys?
Oh, you know, it's an old car, the locks are, you know, they take a bit of work and some time.
Alright.
Oh, my lord, all these cars, the car alarms going off. Alright. Oh, shoot, no, I wanna go this way. Oh, shoot. Alright, okay, we'll be there in a jiffy, alright?
Uh, yeah, yeah, just, just trying to, you know, focus on my breathing and tight, ease those knots in my back, try not to make it any worse, you know?
Yes.
And in, in the moment, I like, didn't feel it, but now... And in the moment, I like, didn't feel it, but now it's like, ooh, I wish I hadn't done that.
Oh, it's gonna ache tomorrow, let me tell you that.
I mean, I like the good kind of ache, the ache that's like, ooh, you just tried a new stretch and like, you challenged yourself and you're growing and getting stronger, like, that's the good kind of ache, you know?
Yeah, no, I agree with you, right?
I don't know if this is the right kind of ache though.
Yeah, I mean, my knees are killing me. I came down real hard and I left.
Ooh.
Yes, hope I didn't chip the bone enough like I had.
Just be gentle with it, you know? Don't push yourself too fast too soon. About listening to your body above all.
Yes, I shouldn't have jumped on that thing. You just have to look at it to see they're dangerous, I mean, it's a board with wheels on, for goodness sake.
Wow. Yeah, I mean, it's just about sort of, you know, getting, building your skill up gradually and not...
Whoops.
Not going too far too fast.
Well, yes, I like to jump and go on, right? I like to dive straight in the deep end. Really, you know, tell you real alone.
I mean, that's like saying yes to life, you know, like, it's...
Yes.
Certainly got something to recommend it.
Oh shit, alright, you go first, right? I think you might be a little worse for wear.
Oh, are you sure?
Of course, right?
I don't wanna like, you know, have a competition, like, who's worse off?
Oh, I'm probably worse off, but I mean, you go first, right? I'm a gentleman, right?
Oh, they're closed. Night Doctor it is.
Oh, we gotta see, okay. Well, they ain't too bad. Um, am I gonna spawn in the same bed? I think so, right? Just give it a minute. My fucking neck is actually sore. In real life. Why am I standing up? There's new...
But I think I need a little lie down.
Oh shit, sorry.
To really, you know, feel better.
Yes, we... Yes, I'm trying to blow off a bit of steam, right? I thought I'd give skateboarding a go. You ever been on one of them? Mate, how old do you think I am?
You're never too old. I mean, everyone can, you know, do something new with their bodies and try new things.
You're...
But I'm gonna go lie down.
In your late 60s, or early 80s.
Oh. Very funny, right? I'm 17!
You're 17?
No, no, of course, of course I ain't. I'm twice that. Well, 17 and a half twice.
I'm not doing that maths.
Well, I ain't... I ain't an old man, right? I'm entering middle-aged.
Where you have you? Did you ever see your brother's death certificate?
No, I've been trying to get one though.
Right. Did I hear broken glass?
That better not be my car. Oh shit, thank lord.
Why were you so sure he was your twin?
Well... I mean, I just had to look at him, right? He...
Well, no, there's more to being a twin than looking like someone.
He wore exactly the same clothes as me.
Again, that's not a twin thing, that's not...
It is, and he had the exact same car, white paint, golden rims. Golden rims, white paint, believe me. He was my twin, right? And he knew things about me a stranger couldn't possibly know. Had the same hairstyles, same glasses, everything, right? Same daddy, same mama. Oh, oh, let me guess, I imagined him, right? Cause I'm, cause you know, I'm seeing things and something ain't right with me, right? So, uh... I must have imagined him, right?
Eh, I'm not ruling that out. Eh, talk to you later.
No, rule it out! The mystery ain't whether he's my brother or not, the mystery is where his zombified corpse is. Mrs. Zoa saw him?
I just wanted, I wanted to ask you.
Yes.
Why did Drake handle the burial?
Well... He kinda took it upon himself, right? Cause I mean, Nathaniel was taking up space here, right? And I was, you know... I couldn't bring myself to... I just didn't wanna deal with it, right? I couldn't believe it, he came into my life and then that shark could bit his ass straight off.
Hey, did you see that ass get bitten?
I saw him, I saw him, you know? I mean, I didn't see, you know, I didn't see him, uh... Well, no, I didn't, right? But that's what happened. He was in the water, the shark was in the water, the shark went for him, and then he was, you know, he died. And I drowned trying to save him.
Right, so you were unconscious, you never actually saw Nathaniel get taken out of the water?
What was that? What was this? What was that all about?
Nathaniel?
Quotation marks? Yes, Nathaniel without quotations. And yes, I was unconscious, right? But when I woke up, he died right in front of me. We was in here. We was in here, right? What are you getting at? The mystery ain't whether he's my twin.
Did Drake, why did, what did Drake see when he offered to bury him? Did he say, "I've done this before"? Did he say, "I've never done this before"?
Well, he said, you know, he knew Nathaniel a bit, and knew what kind of, you know, uh... Because originally, we was thinking putting him in the pet cemetery, right? But then Nora goes and dies, and we think, well shit, Nora's gotta go in the pet cemetery, naturally. And then Drake was like, you know, "I don't think Nathaniel would have wanted to be in the pet cemetery anyway, I think..." He said, "Don't worry, we got a nice spot for him up at the park", and I say... You know what? That ain't a bad idea, because of all that unholy shit going on in the park, he could use a bit of fucking preacher blood, right? Nathaniel wasn't a preacher, but he wanted to be one, you see? And he is a woodcock. So I mean... Same, same, right?
Alright, um, okay.
Yes. Listen... Don't let anybody, if he say zombie Nathaniel, right? Y'all can't shoot him, please. There might be, you know...
There's no such thing as zombies, but if someone tries to harm, we tend not to shoot people until they shoot us.
Well, LeChuck...
He's trying to shoot us.
LeChuck was kinda saying, you know, that's how you deal with zombies. And you know, maybe there's a cure. And he ain't, you know, I told LeChuck, I don't know if you were still there for this, but maybe you was and you're just hearing this for a second time, I say, you know, things ain't... Real life ain't like what it is in the movies. He ain't a zombie going around looking for brains and all of this. He's just a walking, you know, undead man. And talking, walking, talking undead man.
You're saying we shouldn't discriminate against this zombie?
Well, yes, well, I ain't saying that, but no, you shouldn't discriminate, you just should, you know... If he comes for your brains, so, I get it, you go to. If he ain't going for your brains, just, you know, maybe bring him up here and... Maybe something doctors can do, right? Well, you saw him, Plonk, I don't know why you're denying your own eyes. Oh, let me get out your eye. Plonk is in denial.
I mean... Evidence of another world can be hard for some people to accept, you know?
Yes.
Their minds are closed to anything outside of just like, ordinary, everyday reality that they can see with their eyes, but what about what you can see with your heart?
Oh, that's lovely, I'm gonna use that. That is absolutely lovely, right? And yes, you're right, a hundred percent peace ain't right. That main, you know... His heart is, uh... He's got like, uh, his heart needs glasses, right?
That's, yeah, that's a, that's a great way of putting it.
Yes. Oh, shoot.
So, uh, if you're not too busy right now, uh...
Of course.
I could use a lift to the impound to pick up, well, my bike or my scooter.
Yes, of course. Jump on in.
Aw, thank you.
What kind of scooter? Is it one of them fight scooters, or is it a electric thing?
Uh, no, it's, uh, well, it's, it's gas unfortunately.
Oh, yes, yes.
I wish it was electric, but, yeah, no, it's just a little like, for riding around the city, or, well, really more for outside the city, like, anywhere longer where I wouldn't want to ride just my bicycle, you know?
Yeah, yes, take it forever.
I really don't use it too much, but, you know, if I'm going up to like, Toledo Bay to do like, some volunteering at the recycling center or something, and, you know, it's also got a little storage compartment, so I can, you know, stash any goodies that I find.
Oh, yes, right. Alright.
Great, thank you so much.
Oh, anytime.
I hope that your knee is feeling okay and, you know, that you're having no lasting harm for your little skateboard adventure.
I think I'll be fine, right? I've lived through a lot worse, you believe me?
Alright, well, thanks again for the ride and I'll see you around.
Anytime, Mrs. Zoa, I'll catch you later, okay?
Take care, father.
Um, ton of cops on. Does that mean there's six cops? Nah. Cause there's Yugi and, uh... A fucking Hunter, I think that's his cop's character's name. Casey Hunter. No, Hunter is the... No, no, Arnie's his cop, Hunter's the mechanic, yep, yep, yep. Kept thinking Hunter, I kept thinking I was wrong. Um... Alright, well, let's go... Go to the church for the fuck of it. Yeah, might be, um, things might be winding down here. Oh, what's this? What was the tweet? "Want to send a huge thank you, hashtag thank you to @mayasuzi for supporting our survivors, hashtag survivors, hashtag support circle initiative. I know there are a lot of you out there with stories to tell, so keep an eye out for an announcement soon." Uh, Femi, thank you very much for the following. Welcome! Gammy, good morning mate, how you doing? Um... Yeah, should I put this sign? What's the cop doing? Wondering if I should put this sign back up, it says that it's... Smashed up. I think it just disappeared. Oh, shoot! Oh! Yes, hello?
Don't know why I put my helmet back on. How are you?
Well, you know, I'm okay, I've been better, I've been worse, right?
Really? What's going on with you?
Well... Well, where do I begin, right? You know, I've just had a weird, weird fucking few dice, a lot of creepy shit going on, surely you've noticed?
Uh, I haven't noticed much creepy stuff, I've noticed the hammer guy, I was actually just, I saw you pulling in and I said I might just come over and see if you've had any dealings with him.
No, not since the other day, right?
Alright.
Oh, gotta ax, he's a little... Oh, he's scared, is he?
Maybe, maybe he didn't wanna push his luck.
Asshole. Push his luck, I mean, he, you know, pushed it off a cliff as far as I'm concerned.
Do you know what? I cannot disagree with you. I do have a little question for you.
Then I gotta answer. You wanna go inside a little ladder here?
Uh, I'm just wondering, is that like, what's a bowl of blood or something?
What's he is? No, they're like, um... Lights, right? I've been seeing them all over the place, I think they're part of these Halloween decorations, yeah, see, there's more over here.
Oh, fucking hell, I feel stupid for answering that question now.
Oh, that's fine, I mean, but I, I don't know, I think it's a city council, I was not consulted about these, uh, look at this, it's got ghosts connected to the church. I don't know how I feel about this.
It's graveyard, isn't it? It's where ghosts are.
Well, shoot, okay, you're going with the hell. But I mean, this ain't, this ain't, you know, this is supposed to be spooky, this ain't supposed to be, you know... The ghosts, oh shoot, all the angels, they might be angels, right? Maybe I'll just say the angels. And the jackalines and... Well... It's, you know, biblically accurate angels, right? And the pumpkins are biblically accurate pumpkins.
Oh, well, that's good. Biblically accurate pumpkins, is there a lot of mention of pumpkins in the Bible?
Well... Oh shit, there's gotta be at least one mention, right?
Surely, surely.
Yes.
I haven't read the Bible in quite a long time, to be honest.
Oh, right, no, I got that shit memorized. But more or less, right?
My mother used to read it to me, so I'd fall asleep when I was young.
Oh, really? Oh, what a wonderful lady, what was her name?
Uh, Margaret.
Oh, Margaret, right? Marge.
No.
Oh, she didn't like that?
No, we, a few people called her Peggy.
Oh, Peggy?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, Maggie. Maggie is short for Margaret, isn't it? Or is it?
Peggy also is.
No, I ain't Peggy short for-
Don't ask me why. What's, what's Peggy short for?
I ain't short for, Pegasus, right? Great name.
Oh, I don't think my mother was called Pegasus.
Well, you don't think or you don't know?
I, I don't think. I never saw a person, to be honest.
Oh, yes, right.
Maybe she was fooling me the whole time. Maybe she didn't wanna be called Pegasus.
Oh, it's a beautiful name.
It wouldn't be too modern though, would it?
Oh, yeah, but I mean, modern names these days are pretty crazy. Beyonce. Right?
That is pretty odd, isn't it?
The weird name. I don't like it.
Just one name.
No, she got a last name.
What's her last name?
Knowles.
Beyonce Knowles?
Oh, no, it's, uh, Beyonce fucking, uh, oh, shoot, uh, fuck, who's, what's her husband's name? Oh, I forget it. Who's, what's her fucking husband's name?
Oh, Big Shaq.
Big Shaq from the L.A. Lakers?
Yeah, that's who's married to Beyonce, isn't it?
No, no. Beyonce Z. Beyonce Z. Thank you, thank you, bacon. Z. Yes. Well, you thought she just had one name?
Yeah, like Madonna.
Yeah, that's crazy. I heard the other day Madonna, Madonna literally means old lady. Oh, yes, hello. Howdy, partner.
Howdy, partner.
How you doing today?
What do you think of my costume?
Wait, who's that?
It's Yugi.
Oh, you're joking, my Yugi?
This is my Halloween costume. What do you think?
You look like a cowboy.
Oh, that's my costume. I'm a cowboy, baby.
You look like Marty McFly in Back to the Future Part Three.
Oh, yeah, I'm Clint Eastwood.
Oh, yeah, so you, you are actually, why, from Back to the Future or the real Clint Eastwood?
What? No, I was just making a reference to Back to the Future Part Three.
Oh, right. No, shoot, look at this. You go to, let's say you draw.
Uh, I don't have a gun.
Well, no, just put your finger, finger gun, right?
Oh, right, right.
Jay-Z doesn't have a last-
Whoa.
Yo.
Oh, shoot, right. Billy the Kid over here. Billy the Kid.
Oh, that, yeah, it's Billy the Kid, I guess.
Oh, uh, Wild Bill Hickok. Excuse me?
It's just a little guy. He's looking over me, make sure I don't get stabbed again.
Oh, yeah, that's good. I mean, he's, he got a scythe, so you better watch out.
Yeah, if you fall over till you left, you're gonna get stabbed.
Yeah, I'll never fall over. Um,
You really wanna roll them ass?
Yeah. I've already been stabbed once, right? What's another one?
No, no. Oh, shoot. You one of them cowboys from the, from the forties, huh? Oh, look, oh, look at this.
Why do I have my hand up my ass?
Well, you cowboy. Oh, shoot, right. Oh, you need to find a lady to dress up as calamity giant, right?
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. Maybe I, yeah, I gotta go find a place out in, uh, out in the desert to take a nice picture for, uh, for Halloween.
Oh, where there's all that cactus and wild old.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, like open sandy.
Yeah.
You know, they're like houses.
Maybe I can find some cows, so I'll be a literal cowboy.
Oh, right.
There's a few farms up there.
Yeah, I could check.
Oh, shoot, you should say, uh, biages. We don't need no stinking biages.
Oh, yeah. I should have gotten a bash and I could have been the cherry.
Oh, yes.
Or maybe if, like a monocle, I wish they had had like a monocle, like the Halloween store.
Oh, yes. What about like a wooden teeth, wooden teeth?
It wouldn't, well, no, it would be like a go-to.
Oh, yes, right. Wooden teeth go way back, further back than they had, right?
That's like, that's like George Washington.
Yes. No, you're right.
Anyway, I, uh, I should probably get on my, uh, on my steel horse, cause I'm a cowboy.
Oh, it's your penthouse.
I ride, I won't stay, won't stay.
Diet over live. Oh, I love that song. Bon Bon Jovi?
Yeah.
Classic. Oh, shoot, we kinda look like Marty and, and Doc, right? Doc, uh, Doc Brown?
What? Doc Brown?
Yeah, I kinda look like Doc Brown, right?
What, what does the bike?
No, me, Doc, 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 D O C. Doc Brown.
No, I under, I understood that. I thought you were talking about the bikes. I was talking about the bike.
Yes, I know. I was saying you and me side by side, we look like that photo of, uh,
Oh.
Marty and, uh,
You need a, you need wider hair.
Oh, well, yes.
You know, you would make a good Doc Brown if you, if you, uh, change up your, you know, you could dress up like a math scientist kinda guy.
Oh, yes, right.
And then we need to find, uh, somebody to be beef.
Oh, yes. Who could be beef?
I mean, Cham kinda looks like he could be beef if he dressed up right, right? He just need like a tracksuit.
No, he looks like, uh, oh, shoot, what's his fucking name? Marty's daddy, right?
Oh, like George McFly?
George, George. Just get you up a tree with some barnacullos.
Oh, gee. That was a creep. Oh, gee, you already have the barnacullos. There you go.
Oh, shoot, yes. Oh, shoot, now we need a, uh, why can't I remember any of the character's names? His mama, what's his fucking mama's name? Diane, what?
Lorraine.
Lorraine, fucking hell.
Like the quiche.
Oh, yes, yes.
Oh, by the way, Father, I'm, I'm sorry that I got up and left your brother's funeral the other day, but you know, all that, all that cheat about, uh, you know, what Casey was talking about, it just, uh,
Oh, yes.
You know, it made me kind of upset because, you know, naughty would have been really upset to hear something like that, so.
I understand, right? I was upset to hear it. I couldn't believe what I was hearing.
Well, you know, Casey is a pretty, pretty on the level guy. I, I don't know why, you know?
Oh, yes, right. Shooting a shotgun and trying to pin it on me?
Wait, what?
Well, no, uh, you know, I better not say too much. This is an active investigation.
Oh. So, what happened, uh, what happened with the wake?
Oh. Well, are you sitting down?
No, but I can be, hang on. Oh, wow, this, uh, this cold really goes up, doesn't it?
Oh, shoot, yeah, right.
Feel like a turkey.
Oh, yes, right. Yeah, what the hell? You look like a turkey. Well, hey, come on, come on, let's go inside, right? Y'all, y'all ain't in no hurry?
Uh, no, really. Let me, let me park my bike.
I am actually, uh, I'm gonna have to head to bed. Unfortunately, it's well past me bedtime.
Oh, shoot, yes, right.
But I hope you have fun.
Well, as much fun as we can, right? It's, you know, it's-
Of course. And if you, uh, if the hammer boy comes around, just make sure you give us a call, alright?
I'm gonna kill him. I'm gonna, he's my, he's-
Don't say that to me, please.
No, 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 I'm go, okay, no, no.
You're gonna be suspect number one.
Let me-
Who are you gonna kill?
No, 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 let me put it a different way, right? I'm a self-defying against that man. He comes anywhere near me and poses a threat to my life. So fact, if, if he comes anywhere near me, that's a threat, a threat to my life, right? We have established this man is dangerous and trying to kill people, right?
Are you talking about the hammer guy?
The hammer man.
Yeah, the hammer man.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, well, I don't actually know if it is a man, if it's a hammer person, I guess.
It's a man. No, no lady would do this.
Have you seen him?
No lady would do this.
Oh, you never know.
No.
You taking the piss?
No, this is a man crime.
How many times have you been thumped over the head with a baseball bat? And who's that done by?
Oh, yes, there was at least one lady in there. Usually, you're right.
Listen, we can't be, we can't be just assuming.
Yes, you're right.
What happens when you assume.
Oh, don't remind me. Yeah, you don't know how to spell or assume, right?
Well, that, that is-
What do you mean? Making ass out of you and me?
No, no.
It's like text slang, you.
You're just making ass out of everybody, right? You just say it makes ass out of everybody. No room for confusion then, you're making your point. Yes, makes ass out of everybody. I get it, right?
I guess so.
You're making an ass out of everybody?
No.
You're enough for disturbing the peace.
No.
You were fighting for that.
Oh, say, Los Santos finest, everybody had to get me again.
Again?
Jesus Christ, can't take a joke at all, can you?
No, don't say that name. I can ta, listen, I can take a joke, right? Go on. Tell me what.
You put me on the spot here.
Knock knock.
Who's there?
Boo.
Boo hoo.
Why are you crying? It's only a joke.
Oh, boo hoo, yes, right, you go on there. No, don't trick me. No, I don't wanna be tricked.
It's not a trick, it's a joke.
Funny when I'm, alright, well, okay, who's there?
Little old lady.
Little old lady, who?
I didn't know you could yodel.
Oh, Yugi.
What?
Alright, uh,
Oh, you know, I just noticed the nice little, uh, Halloween decoration that you put up here.
I didn't put them up, right? I didn't put them up. They ain't Halloween. They ain't ghosts, they're angels, right?
They don't like ghosts to me.
Yes, cause they're biblically accurate angels.
Oh, oh, gee, those are scary.
And biblically accurate pumpkin heads.
What about this Yakolander here?
Biblically accurate.
Oh, okay.
Pretty nice, right?
Yeah, it's very evocative. Did you put any, any decorations inside the church?
I did not put any of these up. I don't know, it was city council, right? I wasn't even consulted. And no, I ain't, I don't think there's anything inside.
Oh, well, that's a shame.
Yeah, it would be really festive if you put more decorations in here.
Well, I mean, it's pretty festive. I mean, as festive as a church can get, really.
Well.
What says festive?
Flowers on the benches and stuff.
Oh, yeah, who's going, who's going to nurture him, right?
Well, you don't have a maintenance person or something?
Uh, dead. Man's gone missing. Presumed dead. He's got, I, I-
Report on this?
Well, I don't know, I don't know where he's at, what's he, what he's doing. I don't, you know, don't talk to me about that, right? I don't know. The only thing I know is that man ain't been in here for months now and the whole place is going to shit. Actually-
So you don't care about the well-being of this man at all? You just care that the church looks like shit?
What am I gonna say? I don't know where this man is. He might be fine.
You sure? Is he still employed here?
Uh, I think so. I think he's still on the books. He ain't getting paid. No, actually, I don't think he is on the books. I don't know.
Oh, you're paying you under the table, huh?
Has he not showed up or did he just quit?
Listen, right, I, I ain't sure. I'm sure, you know, I, I don't know. You know what? I'm sure he's fine. I'm sure he's, uh, just taking a little time. I don't know. Shoot, I don't know, right?
You've got no idea where he might be or if he's okay or and you just don't care. It's kind of a, oh, he's not fixing my church up anymore, so I'm not gonna put any time into it.
Well, I don't wanna say, right? It's my understanding the man's wanted for murder, okay, there. It's my understanding the man's wanted for murder. I think he got scared and ran away. And I know for fact, he didn't murder nobody. I don't know what you want me to say. Well, he's scared y'all are gonna throw him in jail. Hey, mannequins.
If he ain't done anything wrong to me, wouldn't, they're very thorough investigators in, in the PD.
Then why has it been charged if he ain't done nothing wrong?
Is he being charged?
I don't know. I, I believe he is, but my, I don't know, maybe statute of limitations, I don't know. Hey, hey, right, how you doing?
Conclusions here.
Sorry?
Yeah, this took a real turn.
You're jumping to a lot of conclusions.
Well, I just see, that's what happens when you, when I don't know, right? That's why I like to know things before I go, you know, concluding. I like to arrive at conclusions, uh, step by step. I don't jump, right? I don't like to jump.
Right.
Oh, it's still, I thought I fixed it.
Fair enough, I guess.
What? I'm, I swear I fixed that. Huh?
Well, from, from my understanding, so does the man that you used to have as a maintenance person in, in the church.
Yes.
He's under investigation for murder.
I believe so.
He's on the run.
I don't know if he's on the run. I don't know if he's, you know, just hasn't come out his apartment or maybe he got married, maybe shoot, maybe he, uh, I don't know, moved to Mexico, right?
Right. And all you care about is the fact that your church looks like shit now, cause he's not here.
Well, that is my immediate-
About the welfare, well-being of this.
Yes, I do. Stop, stop trying to make me out to be some kind of, uh, you know, someone who don't give a shit for the well-being of other people.
Wait a minute. You know what I just realized?
Well, say it.
Well, your maintenance guy is gone, right? You don't know where. The maintenance guy of Bahama Mama died. Maybe, uh, maybe maintenance man is like a cursed job around here.
Oh, shoot. And I mean, there's no shortage of curses.
Yeah, you know, Gary Pillock.
Yes, I know, I know. Yes, he passed.
Yeah, he was the maintenance man of Bahama Mama.
Yes, I know.
Maintenance man, they're just-
At least two maintenance men have either disappeared or died. That's why I'm saying it's a cursed, it's a cursed position.
Don't tell people that, cause I need to find myself a new, a new handyman. I tried to get some support from city council and, uh, well, they, you know, you know what they suggested, which actually isn't a bad idea, and I had to shut my mouth, cause it actually wasn't a terrible idea.
What did they say, yes?
Cause I, cause you can't really tell, but the, the podium up here has been smashed up by that hammer man, my little sign out front with my name on it, that's been smashed up as well, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I saw that.
So, uh, the city council, I asked for funds, right, to get this shit fixed up. City council, they suggested we make it like a community thing, right? Get everybody together to help out.
Right?
Yeah, yes, so. Wouldn't that be fun? It'd be fun. Wouldn't that be fun? It'd be fun, right?
Oh, so you're saying that this is. That is a good idea, right?
Yeah, it'd be fun, right?
Do like, instead of a topless car wash, you do like a topless church wash and get loads of people in to, to scrub up.
You want people scrubbing their stained glass windows with their tits?
Yes, I do. I would love that.
I was asking, champ.
Um, I wouldn't say I want it, but I wouldn't be against it.
Well, okay.
I want it, but I am against it.
That is very confusing.
Well, I can't have the, such things going on up here.
What, what's such things?
He's a big rock, don't they? You're about a, about a hundred. Sorry, would you say shame?
I, I, well, I said it was, it's your house, isn't it? You can do whatever you want, but.
Well, it is hell, it is.
You hear it, you said it's the Lord's house.
Well, I mean, you know, it's, it's Padre Woodcock's house, I guess, but God is the landlord.
Oh, yes, I like that.
How much rent do you pay?
Oh. Well, we, we got an arrangement, right? It's like a sugar daddy kind of, well, no, it ain't ex- it ain't to say it.
Oh, okay.
Did you just, did you just say Jesus is your sugar daddy?
Well, no, no, I said it was like that, but it ain't, uh, to kind of, you know, in retro speak.
I mean, I knew somebody, well, actually, several people I knew back in Bay City who had their arrangements like that, you know.
Oh, yes, right, well, that's sinful, right? It, um, you know, it ain't a good way to let me see, it, it's more like a, uh, you know how, uh, like when, when, when somebody with a lot of money helps out, you know, somebody who doesn't, who needs the money? Maybe somebody younger, a little more vulnerable? And, eh, you know, uh, no, no, it ain't that neither. Cause I'm older than Jesus, excuse me.
Younger and more durable than you.
Well, no, no, I'm doing a terrible job of trying to explain this, right? I mean, it's, uh, he's like my daddy, he's like my daddy, not sugar daddy, just my daddy.
Daddy, Daddy Woodcock.
Yeah, no, no, Daddy Gold.
Oh, right, Papa Dios.
Right. Yeah, Daddy Gold.
Right, right.
And I'm his baby Woodcock.
Eh.
I'm not gonna call you that.
No, see, that, that, yes.
You, you don't like, uh, you know, go around with a diaper and like a pacifier, you're in your, oh, daddy, daddy, god, I've been such a bad boy, you.
No, no, no.
Okay, good, good.
He'll like, you know.
Just wanted to get that out of the way, you know?
Yes, he'll like do something nice for me, I'll be like, thank you daddy.
Oh.
You understand?
Not really, but, uh, you do you.
I'm doing a terrible job of.
Do you always get childlike when you talk to this guy?
Excuse me?
Do you always get that childlike when you get, talk to this guy?
No, no, I just, you know, I'm doing a terrible job of relying on it to you, right? Cuz it ain't verbal, it ain't verbal.
Oh, it's right, so you don't say anything, you just use your mouth.
Oh, you communicate.
No, no, it ain't our rule, it ain't our rule, right? No, it ain't our rule at all. We're okay, but depending on, you know, you know.
Yeah, right.
Eh, eh, I see.
I'm doing a terrible job of explaining it, right?
Y- yeah, you might be.
You might need to, eh, yeah, you might need to workshop that.
It's like I'm Jesus and, and he's, uh, well, Joseph, right?
Eh, well, I mean.
Well, no, no, that ain't fair neither, cuz J- Joseph was, was a cuckold, right? It's more like, uh.
Well.
Oh, it's hard to explain, you put me on the spot, right?
It sounds like, eh, you got daddy issues.
No, no, I love my daddy, shit. I'm wearing his jacket around now.
You're, you're real daddy though, not, not, not your, eh.
Yes, my daddy.
Sugar daddy.
Yes, Daniel Woodcock, my daddy, my daddy, Daniel senior.
Right, oh, okay.
How vain is that?
How old?
What, naming your kid after you?
After yourself, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's a tradition, right? I come from a very long line of Daniel Woodcocks.
How long?
Oh, shoot. How long's a piece of string, right? I mean, it.
A Roman numeral comes after your name.
Oh, shoot, it's gotta be like thirteen, something like that, it's a long, long time, right?
Wow, lucky thirteen, huh?
Thirteen Daniel Woodcocks.
But maybe more, and it was probably, you know, I think, you know, why, but when it was, when, you know, we was in France, it was like, uh, you know, uh, Danielle.
Wait a minute, you know how you say that, like, you've gone out and gotten a shark bit and you've died like twenty times?
Yes, I've heard it a lot of times.
You add an extra Roman numeral to your name every time you, eh, come back from death?
No, no.
Okay, so you, you're the same guy, you're just, eh,
Oh, yes, yeah.
You just come back from death a lot.
Yes, yes.
Right, okay.
No, that would be silly if, if, you know, it was a different man every time.
So, yeah, so it's not like Game of Thrones where you come back and you're just a wee bit madder every time?
Or Doctor Who?
No. Kinda like Doctor He.
I mean, you got a cool jacket, just like Doctor, like the Doctor.
Oh, yeah, right?
Oh, that jacket cool.
Yeah, I know.
That jacket's cool.
Oh, thanks.
There's a bit of both, right?
It's just a regular jacket.
This ain't no regular jacket. Look at it yet.
I am, it's, you can buy them in every secondhand shop.
No, you can't, these are one of a kind. This is my daddy's jacket. Sorry?
These plural are one of a kind? That doesn't make any sense.
Well, these types of jackets.
This one is, eh, one of a kind?
Well, there are others, right? Nathaniel had one.
Oh, really?
And, uh, my dad has still got one as well.
Oh.
But this is my daddy, this is my dad is from, uh, you know, from when I was born.
Oh.
Yes, he wore this in the eighties.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yes.
Wait, you were born in the, oh, yeah, I guess you are, eh.
Oh, right on the age, right, eighty-nine.
You are thirty-five, right, yeah.
Yes.
Allegedly.
Allegedly? No, come on, I don't look old, right? I've been told it's the way I care myself, I'm very distinguished. And people think, you know, shoot, he's gotta be fifty, sixty, seventy years old.
Well, I would say like fifty-five, if I had to make a guess.
But I mean, you know, yes, fifty-five year old who moisturized every day, right? Didn't get much sunlight, drank a lot of water.
Eh, sure.
I think it might be the glasses.
No, these make me look youthful, right?
Are those your daddy's glasses too?
Well, no, he's, you know, he's got his own glasses, the same style.
Right.
They look the same.
You know, I, I don't think I've ever taken a really good look at you, padre.
Well, how could you know?
Well, I mean, I, you know, don't really do that, oh, oh, no.
That's with the doctor for Halloween now, he doing right?
Well, it's cute, isn't it?
You got di- dice for earrings, that's cool.
Yeah, yes, that's why I said, you don't roll them dice before.
When she set up?
About getting stabbed or something when you, when, uh.
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't actually, it actually wasn't, uh, I kinda shit on it, and nobody got it anyway.
I think it's, it's one of those things, you know, when a preacher's talking to you, that some things just go in one ear and out the other?
No.
Yeah, it's kinda like that.
When a preacher talks to me, I shut up and listen, right? Cuz I'm about to have, uh, you know, my whole world rolled.
Wait, when does a preacher talk to you? I thought you were the only one in town.
Um, yeah, well, as far as I know, I am, right? You got assholes, you know, going around saying they preachers, but they full of shit.
Like that him guy?
Him, Salamander man. Even Garen Knowles going around saying he's a preacher apparently.
Salamander man.
If you see, eh, S- Sama Sadi around, you let me know immediately.
Who?
Sama Sadi?
Oh, Salamander man?
Aye.
Yeah, yes, right. Oh, you bet, you're right. Fucking asshole, I ain't seen him for a while. Oh, I hope he's okay. Asshole.
Do you know? You kinda sound like you don't.
No, I don't, right, I don't. I hope that, you know, I hope the worst for that man.
Oh, that's, that's not very nice.
Well, it ain't, right? No, I, I can't say that neither. I hope the he's, you know, I ain't getting too much good fortune, right? I don't wa- wish, I hope he's getting exactly as much good fortune as he deserves, right?
Well, there you go.
Yes.
You needed a number on your altar, didn't you?
He did. And my son at, at the front there.
Bad karma to do that.
Right? He fucks with the church.
Maybe the hammer guy would like fall on his own hammer.
Well, in this city, pretty much everyone, right?
No.
Every time I come up here, there's a, there's a different piece of graffiti on the walls.
Well, ah, you know, I mean, demons, the, you know, what can I say? Demons gonna fuck with the church, put graffiti on here, and they gonna work round the clock.
How many demons have you pissed off in the city?
Oh, just about everyone. Demons don't like me.
How many demons are there in this city?
Well, Mr. Nancy, who may.
She is not a demon.
No, she ain't a demon.
Thought she just got sick.
She go to demon, well, I'm thinking she don't got the demon inside her no more. After the last time I was talking to her, she looked quite colorful, right? She looked better.
Well, that's good.
And, and she seemed, uh, she's, I don't know, she's angry with me though, right?
Oh, I can't imagine why.
Well, I get it, right, I do. She, you know, oh, shoot, that day, the, after Nathaniel's funeral, shoot, I mean, we thought the world was ending.
I must apologize for missing, I, I slept through it.
Oh, yes, no, thank you, right? It was a fucking clusterfuck, right, and I'm ashamed.
Oh.
I'm ashamed.
Why are you ashamed? There's nothing to be ashamed of.
Yeah, there is fucking, uh, Casey should be very ashamed of himself. And, uh, oh, no, I ain't ashamed, shit. It's a shame.
You just said you were.
You did just say you were ashamed.
I'm ashamed, no, I, not of myself, so I ain't ashamed of myself, I'm ashamed of Casey. I'm, I'm ashamed of, uh, Randall? I'm ashamed of, uh, Nancy? Randall?
What, what have they all done? What's, what's, why are you ashamed of these people?
Cuz they, cuz they they don't get it, right? I've been trying to help all these people for longest time. And they treat me like a piece of, piece of, uh, trash. Well, Randall ain't, you know, Randall, you know. Hey, well, he's, you know, I mean, he's, he's legally obligated to refer to me as his best friend, right?
Legally?
Yes, legally, it's illegal.
That's somewhat of a friendship, isn't it?
Yeah, that sounds, eh, contractually obligated friendships, that's, it's no good. But, eh, I, I, I just realized I have, eh, I have a very important appointment to keep, so if you'll excuse me, I gotta go.
Oh, shoot, yes, go ahead, right?
Good seeing you.
I did say it was time for, time for bed twenty minutes.
Yeah, about that time, right? Alright, thank you for popping in, right?
Of course, um, keep yourself safe and well.
Oh, of course, don't worry about me, shit.
And, eh, just between you and me, next time someone offers you a gun, don't take it.
I never touched a gun in my, I, listen, right? I love guns, right? I love them. I ain't, but I ain't shot a gun since I was a boy.
You're gonna look me in the face and say that again? Just wanna see if there's any.
Listen, listen, let me just, let me listen, right? I mean, people, people saying, oh, shoot, Woodcock killed, killed this shark, I'm sure you're aware, right? You're on police, they probably, you know, it's probably written down there on piece of paper or something.
Uh, that part is a rumor, aye.
Do you know, I mean, eh, y'all must be, uh, trying to figure out the motive, right? Okay, well, we got the allegation. What, what motivation could he have had to do this? Well, what's the, what's the MO? Well, no, what's the motive, right?
There, there's no motive that would be justifiable for killing, eh, a creature.
Killing a man either. He's continuously trying to kill you every time he stepped foot in that ocean and.
It's, this is.
Kill your brother.
Under, under your daddy's jurisdiction, is it not?
No, he ain't got nothing to do with it. He gave sharks free will, just like he did man.
Right.
He didn't make the shark kill my brother.
He also gave some of us, eh, authority to, to carry out the law. To, to make sure the man's free will doesn't go awry.
Right? Listen.
You can't go around killing things.
Let's say, let's say hypothetically I done it, right? And I'm just, uh, using this as a exa- as a argument, right, as a hypothetical. Right?
Okay.
I mean, is there even a boat? Do we even know if the shark's dead? All I hear is, oh, Woodcock killed the shark. Was it the shark that bit me? And killed my brother? Was it a different shark? Was any shark killed? Can sharks even be killed, right? Never think of that.
Um, yeah, shark, sharks can definitely be killed.
Yes, well, of, of course, yes.
Yeah, yeah, sha- sha- sharks aren't immortal beings, you know?
Yes, no, you're right, you're right. But it's, uh, let's say I done it, right? Just for argument's sake, saying a confession, I, uh, categorically deny all allegations to do with this matter, right? But let's say I did.
Eh, okay.
You're welcome. And y'all welcome. And y'all, y'all welcome. This whole town's welcome, right? You understand?
So you did kill the shark?
No, um, d- d- listen, I just said, um, saying no conf- I'm just saying for argument's sake, right? Listen, I'm, I ain't gonna lie, I'm glad the shark's dead, if it is indeed dead. Don't get me wrong now. Now, if I murdered the thing, which I mean, you know, let's face it, I can't, you can't murder a shark. You need a whole new definition, you need a whole new word for that, murder means people, right? Can't murder a shark.
Is that true? I don't believe that to be true.
Oh, look it up. Look it up. In your little tablet there, it's probably on the poll.
I'm looking at.
On the police website. Woodcock doesn't consider anything like forty-five calibers a gun.
Alright, just give me a minute.
Actually, some of us are lads graffiti, yeah, you're right. It's amazing, I love when someone talks about my characters to my other characters.
Right, can you hear me?
I got you, yes. I got you, yes.
So, the definition for murder is any intentional killing that is willful and premeditated with malice.
Yes.
Not have to be directed towards a person.
Yes, it does, yeah, it does.
Hmm, I don't know, cause when you kill that shark, it's, it's pretty much murder.
No, no. If I killed that shark.
I nearly got you.
Yeah, I, I know what you're doing now, uh, this ain't my first rodeo. I must have radio. This ain't my first rodeo, right?
Alright, alright, listen, uh, I've, I've got no evidence, uh, at this moment in time. I'm sure it'll come back around in, in an official interview, it'll be done and all that kinda stuff, but.
You're one asshole's testimony, right? Who's got it out for me? Who's gone?
Why, why does he have it out for you?
Oh, I got my theories.
Would you care to enlighten me?
Well, it's an active investigation, right? I can't be saying nothing, you know, for legal reasons. It's a serious matter.
I am a man of the law.
I know.
So you can, you can tell me?
Oh, and everything's gonna be alright.
I wouldn't say that, I'm just saying.
Hey, miner, how you doing?
I can jot it down.
No, no, I can't, I can't, uh, we'll see how this progresses, right? And I'll see, I ain't talked to a lawyer, you know, I need to talk to a lawyer, I'm under investigation for killing. I ain't under investigation for murder, for killing, right? A fucking fish, what about them down at Pearls now?
What about them?
They kill fish.
Well, there's quotas. Or not quotas, what's the word? There's, uh, there's like a ma- a min-max. You can kill a maximum amount of a certain type of fish because there's, uh, overpopulation of them.
Oh.
Guarantee you, there's, um. Not an overpopulation of sharks.
Alright, throw them away.
They're not.
Throw them in jail.
You want us to put sharks in jail?
No, the Pearls people. You're saying, oh, yeah, they kill fish.
Shark there.
I bet you they'd do you up a bit of shock if you wanted to. And what if they did? Would they, would that be illegal? I've eaten shark at a, at a chipper.
If they have license. There's a, there's a procedure and, and a legal way to go about these things. They've got all the paperwork, okay, then it's alright. I don't believe you have any paperwork. Nor a weapons license to be shooting at a shark.
I'd, uh, yes, exactly. I would not shoot at a shark. I don't got a license to, and I don't got a license to shoot, right?
Hmm. Well, I guess all, all will, will be told and all will unfold.
Oh, you betcha, I can't wait, right? I can't wait.
Alright, let's see how it goes.
Well, what do you think?
I, I do not know what to think, my opinion is irrelevant, all I can deal with is the hard facts.
Alright, well, do, do we on the same page?
Uh, in some ways, I, I would, I, I would say yes, I'd agree to that.
And what would you do if a shark, you know, kept attacking you and then it killed your brother?
I tell you, the first thing I'd do is I'd stop going out to the fucking shark, I'd leave my well alone. Go swim in a swimming pool somewhere, knock it out to sea.
No, that ain't fair.
Why is that not fair? It's not my house.
The ocean?
Yeah.
Ain't the shark's house.
It is, it lives there.
Well, yeah, but. I, I live, uh, I live in an apartment, doesn't mean, you know, the fucking, uh, Pearls is my house.
What?
He don't own the whole ocean, right? He don't, the shark.
Owning, it's, but it's his home.
Oh, right.
Sleeps there, eats there.
Well, I swim there.
Yeah, but you don't live there.
So, if he wanted to come and walk around of the church, what am I gonna do? Keep trying to eat him?
Well, you'd have a right to defend yourself if someone walked into your home.
But, uh, yes, if he attacked me, sure. No, 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 no. That's it, yes, uh, like I said, I, I, I would, okay. My apartment, if somebody came in, I would defend myself, well, regardless of, uh. What they intend to is, cause I got no way of knowing that, right? I'll just have to assume they mean me harm.
Yeah.
But if a shark came up here and was just like, uh, minding its own business. You know, having a bit of fun, jet skiing around the parking lot. I ain't gonna sneak up on him and, uh, bite his ass off.
Okay. But these are laws of nature, aren't they? You've got, you know, superior intellect to a shark. Or I would assume at least.
So that means if I'm swimming in your fucking. You know, salt a house.
I'm not a shark.
I know, no, I was, I was pointing past you, right, to the ocean.
Right.
You know, the ocean's filled with coral calm, right?
Uh, coral come.
Coral calm. Look it up.
I don't know if I want that in my search history.
Oh, it ain't pornographic, right? Coral calm, yes, salmon, coral salmon.
Right.
And fish salmon, fish pears, fish shit, how do I know this?
Yeah, you searching up a lot about coral come.
No, dude. You just hear these things, right?
Right.
So all I'm saying is it's a shit place to, no, it. Yeah, all I'm saying is it's a shit place to live, right?
Aye, for, for me or you, possibly, uh, not for the sharks, they love it. That's why they defend it with their lives.
They don't have feelings, they don't go, they don't wake up in the morning, go, oh, shit, look at that. I'm gonna get my coffee, I'm gonna have a good diet, I'm gonna eat a preacher.
But, but you, they don't know you're a preacher, they just think you're a nice slab of meat that wandered into their home. And, uh, it's just ripe for the taking.
Yes, right, it's like, uh, oh, yes, you're right. It's exactly like when I wake up, when I'm in my apartment, right? And, and somebody flings a bit of raw meat through my window. And I just go straight for it, right? Don't cook it and know how, just pick it up off the ground, eat it, no questions, right? It's exactly like that, you're right. Oh, how relatable sharks are to us, so relatable.
But you're equating yourself to the primal instincts of a carnivore that lives in the sea, I mean, you, you're not, you, you're not equatable to this.
No, no.
You just, you can't just, it's not a one for one comparison between what sharks do and what you do.
Yes, cause humans are special, right?
I wouldn't say special, I think we're as special as any other creature.
They're the only thing. No, no. No, no. Sharks are just, uh, they're kinda pointless, right?
Uh, I, I disagree, I think everything is put on this planet with a purpose.
Oh, yes.
It's the god that you, you preach in the city that fucking made them.
No, he didn't make them.
God made everyone, no?
No, he might, no, no. No.
Everyone and everything, is that not the whole paint of them?
Okay, well, you, you're in a science. But I mean, that's, you know, it's, uh, that's the answer, that ain't the way it go there, you know what I'm saying? I mean, these, these. You know, Satan has created things as well.
Right, but this is all.
Sharks evolved from Satan. Prove me wrong.
Uh, I cannot prove.
They're cold-blooded evil pieces of shit. Well, that's the magic of it, right? Cause you can't disprove it neither. He can't disprove shit.
Scientists out there, but I don't know.
No, you can't disprove none of this shit.
I'm no scientist, I can't disprove that.
Thank you for the bit, right? Well, I'm a very scientific man.
That seems. Kind of the opposite of what your job title is.
No. The two can exist together.
Two can, yeah, God made them as well, didn't he?
A lot of the Bible is, uh, symbolic.
Right. Is there any mention of sharks in the Bible?
Yeah, yes.
Good, bad, indifferent?
Says, uh. Shoot, I'm just, I'm flicking through the pages through my mind, right?
Alright.
Cause I got it memorized.
You got a Bible photographic memory?
Yes. Got a Bible index. Bible contents, you know what? We'll, we'll put that in Bible two, there'll be a whole chapter on sharks, right?
And how they serve a purpose.
And what?
And how they serve a purpose, right?
Well, you'll see, right? No spoilers now, uh, you know, I need to write this, you know. We'll put it in Bible two, that's all I'll say right now.
Is, is there an estimated release there for Bible two, so I can put it in order?
And a die now? Yeah, you want to put in an order?
Yeah, I'd love to put in an order.
Yeah, we can do pre-order.
How much is that?
Uh. Well, I ain't gonna be cheap, cause you know. You know.
How not cheap is not cheap?
Well, what, well, okay. What would you say is a fair price?
For a book?
No, for Bible two.
But it's a book.
No, it's a library. It's a series of books, right?
Big is this gonna be?
Oh, it's gonna be tiny.
Two, part one to whatever.
No, it's gonna be tiny, it's gonna be, you know, way smaller than the real Bible. Cause I mean, that's, uh, the first Bible has a lot of problems. One of which is it's way too long, people just look at it and go, I hate reading all about it. So you make it, you make it shoulder, you make the sequel shoulder, people go and check out the sequel. Then be like, you know what, I need to go check out this first one.
Well, in which case then it mu- must be very cheap because there's not much, uh, paper being printed and not much being used.
Yeah, well, oh, shoot, you know what, I'm on the, I'm just still flicking through the Bible in my head, right? I'm on the bit about Noah's ark.
Right.
Huh, one of every, one of every creature, okay, okay, let me say, shoot, he didn't get any sharks. Not a single shark.
There's a very good reason for that, I know.
Oh, here we go. Go on.
Well, what was Noah's ark built for?
So, to, to save the, you know, the one of every creature. The two of every creature. From the end of the world, right?
Yeah, but what, what happened?
Well, God's wrath, right?
Yeah, but, yeah, but. What does an ark do?
Well, it keeps everybody safe from the threat, right?
From a flood.
Yeah, it is.
I'm not too sure how well versed you are on sharks, but they're act- they actually do alright in the water.
In fresh water?
They didn't need saving from the water.
Yeah, they did, cause it was, it was rain, right? It was fresh water, it wasn't salty water. They would've go to.
Still oceans, they just needed to swim a bit deeper in the salty water.
Yeah, but it was really fresh water, right?
No, bollocks. That's not how it works.
Nah, I don't know. See, this is where my son.
All the salt water just disappeared, turned into fresh water.
No, got diluted.
Back down again, all the salt water came out.
Got diluted, right?
Not enough to kill off the sharks.
I don't know.
Well, if, if Noah's ark was made to save one of every animal, and sharks are still around. How did they get saved?
Well, Satan. He had his own, he had a, uh, he had a submarine.
So Noah had an ark and Satan had a submarine?
That's right, it's gonna be in Bible two. Satan sub. And I ain't talking about Salamander man. Right?
Right, yeah, no, he's something with a goat or something.
These people.
That's funny, cause he, he worships a goat and a goat was on Noah's ark. Explain that one.
Oh, the. Get the poor goat, it's been, you know, co-opted, right? It's been, you know, there ain't nothing inherently wrong with the goats.
You've met, uh, Sama Sadi?
Yes.
Something inherently wrong with that guy.
Oh, you got no argument from me, you're right, we on the same page.
Right, but God saved his worship.
Philipus to me to sleep, we go.
So who's the real fucking demon here?
Ah, now you starting to ask the fucking rock questions, right? You're learning.
So your daddy might be the demon?
Excuse mine?
I said, your daddy might be the demon?
No, no, you didn't say that. No, I don't know how you got there.
He's the one who saved the goat. And now the goat's going around, he's fucking everything up.
No, the goat, no, 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 see. The goat, uh, you know what, they shouldn't ever, I mean. They should never have used the goat as their symbology, right? Don't, you know. That's, that's just shit fucking management. Ain't nothing wrong with goats.
Hmm. I'll have to question this Sama Sadi on it if I ever catch him again.
I hope you catch him before I do, let me tell you that.
Right. I'll tell you one more thing.
Go on.
You ever square up to me like that again, I'll put two prongs of this taser in your left testicle.
Well, don't talk shit about my daddy.
Don't square up to a police officer.
Well, I was, you know, lis- okay, look, look, okay.
Your chest feathers, right?
Yeah, yes, it's inappropriate, I, I, I cop to that, right? It, listen, I lost my brother two times.
Right, and this is the aggression you show, right after losing someone. So that kinda adds into the pa- the fact of, uh, going out to kill a shark after the death.
You just hell-bent on, you just hell-bent on making me seem like some kinda monster, right? I know you can't, I know you're kind, I've seen him.
I, I am also a religious man.
Oh, he bless you.
To get everything together.
Alright, I ain't the monster people wanna paint me out to be. I don't know why people insist I'm some kinda fucking monster.
Cause you keep fucking acting like it.
I'm the bullshit.
Just chill out a little bit.
I have not done one monster.
To make some more questions, Alaney, you start shouting and roaring and popping your feathers out.
No, no.
Just take it easy.
I did. It's a little hard for me lately, right?
I can sympathize with the, with the trouble you're going through.
Thank you, that's all I ask. People trying to make me. People seem to ignore the fact that I lost my twin brother. They, they ignoring that and treating me like I'm a monster. Cause, oh, uh, I, I apparently killed some fucking shark?
Well, maybe if you, who does a priest call to confess?
Straight to the souls, right? Straight to the big man.
Well, maybe you should have a chat with him then, confess your sins, you know, live a guilt-free life.
Oh, sins, right, I ain't never sinned, I ain't never sinned in my whole life, not once. Except, well, well. I mean, we all sinners, right? That's, I mean, human nature, you know, we, we're born into it, right? But, but being a. but but being a preacher I'm kind of you know I'm kind of above that kinda
you're above sinning
yes so to speak
right seems a bit I don't know
monstrous right like only a monster could say such a thing right let me guess
no anyone could say that might be like an ignorance kind of a thing but no that's alright
you got a lot to learn so
maybe maybe when I reach your old age of fifty five I'll uh
no how old how old a man are you
I um twenty eight I think
well I mean we would have we could have gone to the same school together
yeah but at different times right like forty years in the difference
no I'd be uh
you'd be the teacher
I'd be starting middle school when you were starting elementary right
oh I I don't understand American school systems
oh yes right I would have uh been grade eight when you were grade one
no I still don't know what that means can you give me ages
I would be really y'all don't have grades
no 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 we have junior infants and then senior infants and then you first class to sixth class and then you go into secondary school and you go from first year up to sixth year and then you go off to uni
well that's fucking stupid
why it's no more stupid than fucking grade one to grade eight in high schools and
no no
grade schools and elementary schools oh that makes no fucking sense
oh and so what you don't got age over there you just uh you know your baby then you know baby extra
junior infants
then uh baby plus
and then you go to primary school and that's first class to sixth class then you go to secondary school
so your age let me guess your age and and what are you Irish you're Irish man
I am Irish man yeah
alright let me guess your age in Irish right you're about a uh a uh senior alright okay you know what I I don't got the brain power for this I just I lost my brother he came back as a zombie and disappeared right
yeah I heard about that
alright I fucked that up oh you did
since you've got a lot to atone for father that's all I'd say
oh yes cuz I'm so monstrous right I'm such a monster
I didn't say I've never mentioned the word monster once
yes I can I can read your mind
I told you a demon
I can see in your soul I know what you're thinking don't be angry with me cuz I'm two steps ahead
you're two steps ahead but you're running the wrong race
oh very clever at least I'm at least I'm racing right you're at the finish line you called a bus to the finish line at the finish line thinking saying oh look you're taking forever I'm like no I'm racing the race like it's like it's like it's supposed like a race is supposed to be raced right the honest do you think you see what I'm saying
yeah I think you're walking while I'm running I think that's the difference
oh very clever where I think you're no I think you're crawling while I'm flying
if you're flying you're not any steps ahead what are you talking about
the fuck oh my god he's pulled it off freshwater sharks hold their souls to Satan to survive um I've missed heaps here uh Kate did I say hello I feel like I did I at least thought about saying hello if I didn't hello um I've missed tons here Yugi called us a knife um oh mannequins are you one of the um kidnappers weak bones can't believe your doctor held you both and that was taken hostage again alright right yeah okay you know what else has one a big a big purple one fuck sorry this is ages ago oh my god how long did was I just talking shit for I feel like I I blacked out thanks for the gigantified emote is this the PR brief version what the fuck I'm to I I don't know I there's no I I don't know what uh you're referring to I could have just had Henry lady go on and on some of us allowed graffiti yeah for man under investigation sure I'll spear your guns to the police an awful lot makes you seem less guilty Chuck said he accepted you saying you'd work love how Nori brought up all this dog murder no investigation as soon as the father mentions killing a shark all the PD is investigating it yeah Chuck killed the shark that killed that bit Peter oh my god hypocrisy oh we gotta have that I gotta have that conversation with Peter when did everyone become shark lovers yeah right they've trust me there's plenty more the Chuck sentence a squirrel to die for cutting ten pennies brakes everyone's just really committed to opposing woodcock ah nailed it nailed it why but why don't let him hear you say that city council meetings with double end length actually makes a lot of sense yeah right I think woodcock woodcock has lost it yeah right didn't save sharks in Noah's ark must have hated him woodcock is spinning bible two let's go my god he's pulled it off freshwater sharks sold their souls to Satan survive these people exist yeah they aren't happy uh goat mansion what other evil sharks responsible for uh but he's the greatest of all time every one of my characters is a shark lover and woodcock hater sham not so much to be fair yeah yeah sham was being pretty generous I think all things considered the Halloween event you should make someone obsessed with him it's it's fun um obsessed with who sorry oh yeah there's something's been put out about the Halloween event hasn't it I haven't read it yet ah woodcock like Alistair's yeah gotcha gotcha yeah he's the most entertaining dude to stalk in a non creepy silly RP way why was he stopped just then yeah I'm curious to see where it where it all goes with the shark thing it's so funny need to get back on uh dig back on his samusado yeah samusado and Gary North at once yeah the chase he's going through some bins vehicle's stored I mean I should probably get it out of the way shouldn't I can you actually so what would happen if I go and fuck this car up now I think it is stored oh shoot are they
hi father
how you doing mister choice
yeah pretty good thanks how you going
oh the well they are uh I'm okay
you sure
I don't know li- listen I it's just been weird the weird time right the passing of my brother and then the then the resurrection of my brother
oh yeah I heard someone the the what now
oh oh you know what no it's okay
okay
I don't want you thinking I'm I'm crazy as well
first thing I'm sorry to hear uh don't think I've spoke to you since so uh I'm sorry for your loss
oh shoot thank you so I mean to low right
yeah yeah
yes one of the uh most difficult times of my life
yeah yeah it's uh yeah it 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 doesn't hurt any less but it gets easier to deal with in time as I'm sure you're I'm I'm sure you're aware of
yeah yes I mean you know at this point I don't see I don't see how that could be true right but I know with no you know Tom would Tom Tom gets better with hang on wounds get oh the fuck is it
Tom's a great healer
wheels hooned wheels uh wounds heal so yeah Tom's a great healer that's it
something like that
yes
yeah
no I mean it is what it is right and I'll be okay right hey listen don't worry about my how how you been so
oh yeah just been uh trying on a couple of uh a couple of outfits see if I can throw something together for the uh the competition that's going on
oh yes right I need to have a good thing about that Marseille off
yeah 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 there's some uh there's some great stuff in the shops right now so get some really uh some really creative ideas on the go
alright yeah I need to go shulping
yeah yeah
I haven't been shulping in a long time I love a good shop a good splodge
oh yeah bit of uh bit of retail therapy
oh yes right I I need that shoot I think that'd do me good
yes sir
Maya tells me to lay off the the alcohol so uh was it the mayo
yeah
someone told me to
ti- time's a great healer alcohol not so much
well I don't know I ain't drink you know I I ain't you know drinking myself silly but a few drinks here and there you know really
yeah yeah
you know maybe marijuana cigarette maybe you know wash it all down with a third of milligram poker say it maybe some morphine
yeah you should maybe talk to someone about that
well maybe I should right you ain't the first person to say that and I'm I'm sure you ain't gonna be the last
all things considered I don't know you that well it's not me to tell you your business but at certain point it becomes self medicating and that's not healthy
yeah I suppose you're right it's a good Aussie accent yeah I mean I wish you could smoke Tom right Tom being such a good healer of wounds
hmm
medicate on time
throw some throw some rosemary in there some mint
oh yeah well you know Tom is in you know
joke for you there
yes no I yeah alright
I'm sorry I knew what you meant
yes yes I know no I mean it's good to uh you know you gotta have a sense of humor especially in this day and age right with all the horrible shit horrible shit going on you but you been up to that Legion Park recently
no
don't
don't
believe no don't believe me
something going down there
no but you you know what don't even give another thought right just don't go there don't go have a look okay
alright
promise me choice
I I promise
alright
I will steer clear
alright don't get you don't let curiosity get the better of you right it might be the last thing you do
nah too much nature for me anyway
oh yeah it's right no fair enough
yeah
alright well I better get I better get myself to sleep right
yeah yeah go and uh go and get some rest um
yeah yes being a big die
don't take things too hard on yourself okay
yes
there's uh plenty of people around who'll drink with you and uh that's better than drinking alone and
yes
just take it easy
alright I will do right alright well next next time uh you know next time we bump into each other and won't know maybe we should go grab a drink right I shoot I really like that
I'd like that too yeah for sure
oh thank you so oh bless you okay
alright
alright good night now
hey rude
take care Take care. Uh, confess your sins, Daniel, uh. Oh, maybe Gary would kill him, just talking about him earlier too, and Zoe's. Who about Chase? Alright, I've already, um, done grief therapy with Woodcock today. Uh, I'm not sticking around for this, yeah, night rat. Yeah, he gets a little exhausting after a little while, doesn't he? I'm actually, um. Fucking exhausted IRL. Sandwich mate, how you doing? What's going on? Okay, PM, that's a good, that's a good call. Watch how you, yeah, not bad, not bad, I'm actually, yeah, I'm, I feel pretty exhausted, actually. I've been talking a lot of shit today. Night, Tasco. Peace out, GGs. Yeah, we had a city council meeting earlier. Um, then I had to go do something in real life, so I stopped streaming for like, I don't know, twenty minutes, I came back. And, uh. Now. Server's wound down for the night, I think, mostly. Uh, so, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get out of here. Um. Uh, not really. Any people on a raid? I stick around for the raid, alright, well, we gotta raid now. You too, bacon? Wish more HFT people streamed. Streamed longer than me, or, you know, finished later than me, but it's always, I'm always one of the last ones. Cause it's morning here, like my day's just beginning, but everyone on HFT's, their day's just ending. Um. Should we just go find a random GTA channel? Five days to go until clock change, yes, wait. I would, but it's one AM, yeah, yeah. Pleasure as always, thank you for the stream, you're very welcome. And yes, pleasure as always. Fucking good, uh, good Aussie accent, I gotta say. And I have said it, but I'll say it again. Alright, I can't find anyone to raid. Here's one, I don't know, this person. Um. Looks like they're playing on ONX. Let's just pop in, say hello. Maybe we'll make a new friend. Um. Yeah, when the clocks change, that's gonna be better. Everyone will be going to bed an hour later, basically. Means the world, thank you, you're very welcome. It's not easy, it's not an easy accent, is it? I can barely do it. Um, sweet as, well, thanks for hanging out, everyone. Uh, probably won't be back tomorrow, but will be the day after. And, um, don't forget thirty-first of October, Halloween, I'll be doing my three-year stream anniversary. Um, alright, shit, the raid's about to happen, I'll get the credits going, but the raid will happen in a couple of seconds, so peace out. Take care. Please watch Demo and Darren, they had a good Aussie accent. That's Siggy Butt Brain, isn't it? Oh, fuck, the raids happen. Now I'm talking myself.